Counsel, I would now like to call our special meeting of council's order for June 22, 2016. A couple of amendments to the agenda that I would like to call for a motion to second it. One is to amend the agenda to include a motion to amend this particular meeting to allow for a question and answer period after the delegation have finished with their presentation to council. That will leave that open to my only to council, but council members will also to the members in gallery that have shown up. So I'll accept the motion on behalf of Councilor Krikokah. The councillor, Makai?
I don't think there's one meeting.
So, Council will be able to ask questions first and then.
All who's in favor of the motion? Thank you. The second motion, counsel, will be to at the end of the agenda, as you'll notice, there is not a item included on here for question and answer period as well, which is our normal procedure to allow to accept a motion to include that at the end of the meeting as well. Thank you, Counselor Ha, Counselor Kirby, all who's in favor. Vote if motion is clear. Thank you, counsel. First item on the agenda is recommendation that council approves the agenda of the June 22, 2016 meeting of council as presented. Counselor Krikokah, Counselor Scott, discussion, all in favor? Vote if motion is clear. Council brings us down to the delegation that we have, of course. Gentlemen, if welcome, pleased to have you here. We appreciate you coming out. If I may, if you could introduce yourselves to all of us here, we'd appreciate it and we look forward to your presentation.
I'm Everett Bowen, I chair the board of Lakeview Credit Union.
My name's Kelly Longley, I'm the CEO with Lakeview Credit Union.
John Kurrieta, I'm Director and Credit Union Board Vice Chair.
Joe Judge, Director of Lakeview Credit Union and very familiar with Mike. We served together in the regional district when I chaired it, so.
Pleased to have you, welcome, gentlemen. So, we're here to listen to your comments and we look forward to the discussion that will follow.
If I may, the one thing that I'll let the attendees here know, we're out here as a request from the district to come out here and we do apologize or I do apologize because there wasn't an expectation on myself or the board to have a presentation ready. We're here to have a discussion with the district, obviously, we're here to talk about the recent announcement of our change in branch hours to the Lake Credit Union branch here in Tumbler Ridge. So, again, really, there isn't a presentation from our end to present to you today, it's more of a here, we're here to answer questions at district and obviously that the community has of us and will be more than happy to take those questions. But again, there is no presentation for us to give and we aren't under the impression that we needed to have one ready for, so.
So, council questions? Delegation. Counselor Makai, go ahead, sir.
I'm just curious as to what you have in store in the future. Is this it or is it, or can we look for further cuts down the road here?
So, I'll address a question with, it's part of what we have to look at doing right now. And again, I don't think that we have to let everybody know here, the issues that are faced, not only here in Tumbler Ridge, but in Dawson Creek as well with the oil and gas slowdown. Us as a business, you know, we have branches in Tumbler Ridge, Chetwind and Dawson Creek. We have seen our business dramatically impacted by the slowdown in the oil and gas and the coal. And part of that is, our business has seen a lot of increases to loan allowance, delinquency and things of that nature. And so specifically, you know, for our credit union in the last two years, we've probably added over $2 million, well, it's not probably, we've added over $2 million in loan allowance. And we continue to add at this point in time because of, you know, residential housing foreclosures, business foreclosures and things of that nature. So, the environment, economic environment that we're in has had a really big impact to us and to our members as well. You know, when I talk about loan allowance, that comes right out of your net income. So it's income that we would have had before that we no longer have and that's just us preparing for writing off our loans in the future. And so, right now, our action is to, you know, we have to look at what's best for the membership as a whole, understanding that there's been some difficult decisions made in this community and not only this community, in Dawson Creek as well. We're hoping that the moves that we make today will allow us to continue to business in the future. And again, we have to look at the membership as a whole and, you know, our members expect us to provide services at good rates from a deposit end, good rates from a loan side. They expect us to keep our service charges at an adequate level that they're willing to pay for, because if we don't have our membership, we don't have our credit union. So, these moves today are hoping, again, we didn't want to make these moves. It's hard on, it's hard on our staff first and foremost, they're the ones that have to take the bad news and then it's hard on the communities as well. If we had different options, we wouldn't be making the decision today. It's just, again, allowing us to move forward into the future with a lower cost structure because of what's happening in our communities.
Thank you. Just, Counselor Scott, please.
I think the greatest concern with residents and the business of Tumbler Ridge is the Lake Credit Union is the only financial institute here, so the cutback in hours are going to be a huge deficiency in the town when it itself is struggling as well.
Again, that's a great point. One of the things that I will assure you of is, we just didn't make that decision overnight. And how we came to the conclusion on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays from that time is based on where we've seen the most traffic in our branch. Now, there are people that do come into the branch at 10:00 or 10:15 or 11 o'clock that I've had personal conversations with and they're going to have to change their business to be able to come into the branch that we have, that put the hours at. The reality is, we've watched our traffic flows and we feel that for the community of Tumbler Ridge specifically, those hours will be sufficient enough to supply the services that we've been supplying or providing the services that we've been providing.
Just a couple of points I'd like to mention as well, just along the, I know that a couple of years back when we had talked about this, you had indicated that particular point in time that the Lake Credit Union branch in Tumbler Ridge would now be remotely managed and that service levels would be maintained after present, what they were prior to that. And also, during that same discussion, I believe, and so forth, you've indicated that during the rich time ensured council that despite the economic downturn in Tumbler Ridge, the Lake Credit Union would be supportive and that there would be no changes in the Lake Credit Union's service levels. Here we are again, singing the same song, coming back. And I don't mean any disrespect by that, but that's something that I can recall the council of the day being, accepted that as being something that would last and something that would actually occur and that's proven out not to be the case. There was also another point that I wanted to bring up and which was talked about at the last meeting as well. And that was the fact that we in Tumbler Ridge don't have any representation on your board. That was discussed, we brought that up, I think there was a lively discussion on that. You indicated at that particular point in time that that was the case and that you would bring our concern to the board of Lake Credit Union. We didn't hear anything back, if I'm not mistaken, I'll stand corrected if you had. But my question is, was this formally put to the board and to, by way of a resolution in terms of including a member of Tumbler Ridge to be on the board, to look after our interests or to have a voice on that board? And whether or not that was done by way of resolution? If it wasn't done, why not? If it was done, obviously did not succeed? So, what was the outcome of that discussion and that situation? Because as I understand it, we still don't have a member on the board and we still believe that that's critically important to represent our community on your board.
I'll talk to that if I may. I chair the board and it was part of the nomination committee discussion. And we went and talked, we discussed not only you, but. We do have a member from Chetwind, but it's not a dedicated seat, she ran.
Sorry, can't hear it.
It is not, we have a member from Chetwind.
Can you slide please?
No. We have a member from Chetwind, Jean Hicks, but it's not a dedicated seat, she ran and she won. And I would say it's the same from Tumbler, we actively sought nominations in Tumbler Ridge and none were forthcoming. What was the name of the fellow?
I was going to say Bill Hindley.
No, there was one after that. Up until the last minute, we had conference calls, video conferencing where I talked to them and another one, a member of the nominee committee talked, and what was it? I thought he was on council. Anyway, he was there to the last minute and then he pulled out. We thought we had a nomination from Tumbler. We tried hard, we talked to people that we knew out here for nominations. And Tumbler Ridge has the ability, they have enough votes to vote in their member if they wish to. If you put a member up, I just about guarantee they'll get on the board.
I'll add to that too and answer your question, Mike, or sorry, Counselor Casely. In order for the credit union to change their bylaws or their A-rules, it's quite a process to do. And so, the credit union board did talk about membership from Chetwind, membership from Tumbler Ridge, but they didn't make a change to their A-rules. There is a process behind it. The fact of the matter is, and I'm going to use this here as an example, we had four seats available for election. Those seats were filled by three people, only three people ran. We had nobody run from Tumbler Ridge, nobody run from Chetwind. We are obligated to go through a diligent process by our credit union act that says that we have to let the community know that there's a position open, there's a position vacant, that you're able to run. And we've done that, we've put it in the paper, we've put it on our windows, we've done that and we had nobody run from Tumbler Ridge, nobody run from Chetwind and we had to actually appoint a position in Dawson Creek for one year because we didn't have our membership running for that chair or that seat. And so, specifically, is there locations specific? No. And I don't think that this credit union board, and I might be speaking on behalf of board and these gentlemen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they're looking at changing their A-rules right now because they don't feel that they have to. It was a struggle for them to go and find three people to run for our board this year.
My concern over that, if I can add to it, is the fact that perhaps one of the reasons for that is, is that as I understand it, the residents of Tumbler Ridge, whether or not a representative from Tumbler Ridge is elected or not, depends on all of the other populations around the area, if I'm not mistaken. So that includes Fort St. John?
No.
That's Dawson Creek, that's Chetwind, that's Tumbler Ridge?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think perhaps it's not a matter of Tumbler Ridge running a candidate and having an election here as amongst two or three who might run and therefore would represent Tumbler Ridge on your board. It's open to Dawson Creek residents and everybody else. And again, I have trouble accepting the fact that that's a fair representation with regards to going up to a major community like Dawson Creek. Population is the whole nine yards, everybody has a good feeling about that. So, again, I find it difficult to accept the fact that we do not have representation on that board and quite frankly, if Dawson Creek doesn't want us on that board, if that turned out to be, that to me, I really don't care. We want to have a representative on the board so we can talk about Tumbler Ridge and talk about the hours being changed and have our voice there to be able to at least provide that input. If it goes, if the vote is taken and it goes against them, that's fair ball, that's part of the process. But I have, again, great difficulty in understanding why we can't even have a representative on that board, having to go up with anybody else, it's impossible for the other community. Having said that.
I'd like to, I have to respond to that a little bit.
Sorry, excuse me, the mic, if you just turn it on, it's underneath.
I'm sorry. It's still a point that if you had fielded a candidate last election, you would have a representative on the board. It is still the point that when you did field a representative, Bill Hindley, you had a representative on the board. Jean Hicks from Chetwind can say exactly the same thing about you, that any voting from Chetwind would overwhelm any voting from Chetwind, but Jean Hicks has been on the board for a number of years and she was chair of the board. I think it's, if, somewhere from, we had the prerogative of saying we endorse certain candidates and if you actually got somebody to run from Tumbler Ridge, we would be gladly willing to endorse them. Doesn't guarantee that they would get elected, but having endorsement of the nomination party has to be for something. So I would encourage you, be proactive, we would love it, we would gladly welcome any nomination from Tumbler. We would, you wouldn't believe how welcome we would be of that. We've tried so hard and it hasn't happened.
Thank you very much. Counselor Makai?
Right now, you have three positions filled out of the four. Is there some kind of a process for putting a member in place midterm?
Yes, and we did that, Joe is filling that position and it's for one year. It's an appointment that lasts one year. So in the election coming up, there are two positions coming available as a matter of course, but there will be a third, which is Joe's position, which is the appointed position. So there will be three seats open in April. So again, I encourage you, take the opportunity, get a member out there, get two members out there.
Thank you. Thanks. Counselor Krikokah?
Thank you, worship. Guess my question is, cutting the hours back here in Tumbler Ridge, I'm just curious what you've done in your branch in Dawson and your branch in Chetwind to help with the downturn that you're talking about.
So, specifically in Dawson Creek, there we announced a layoff of eight staff members. And I'm going to back this up a little bit, Counselor Krikokah, if I could. Since I've been here as a CEO, I've been dealing with the board quite regularly about cost structure and things of that nature. And so I arrived here in February 2014. Since that time, and this is the same explanation that we've given to the union, to the staff at Dawson Creek as well. In the last, I'd say, in the first year and a half, we cut 15 non-union and management positions from our credit union. So we saw our staff count go from 72 down to about 57. A pretty huge reduction and a lot of it's through attrition, but some of it wasn't. And as I mentioned, in Dawson Creek, we've announced a layoff of eight staff members. Specifically in Chetwind, we have been cutting back there through attrition. And so, in our opinion, they're staffed at the appropriate level right now. Have we made the same announcement in Chetwind that we have in Tumbler Ridge and in Dawson Creek? No, we haven't. But we feel that we've made that decision over the last few years through attrition. And our organization's changed a lot, you know, again, we went from 75, we're going to probably have 48 staff members after August. And, you know, we are trying our best to control our costs, but again, the economic environment that we're in right now is really having an impact to us. You know, if we didn't have to put all that money into loan allowance, we're probably not having this discussion with you today. We're probably not laying off any people in Dawson Creek. We are affected, just like a lot of other businesses are in this downturn. And we are trying to, again, plan for the future and making sure that we continue offering the services and products that we can, whether it's through reduced hours or whether it's through fewer staff members.
Counselor Kirby, go ahead.
Counselor Casely, the Lake Credit Union has stuck behind us in the past while we hit the downturn and we thank you for the services that you have provided us, for sure. And we understand that the economy is not good right now and everybody suffers. You know, we're a community too, trying to stay afoot and we're, you know, we're moving forward and when you have a bank that's cutting hours, it just, you know, I mean, it doesn't look good for business, you know, for people coming in wanting to invest. But, you know, is there flexibility in these hours or, you know, is it going to be a chance that we're going to look at this and obviously, you know, if it happens, we're going down to three days a week, 12 to four? We've had issues with the bank machines running out of money in the past, is there going to be, you know, are we going to have some backup or are you going to have more money on hand for filling of that? People are going to be banking through the ATM machines more, so that's going to be other costs to that, you know, maybe some fees changes, I don't know, but, you know, hopefully that we can look at this as we, you know, as the months go on.
And so, definitely looking at why we chose the days that we've done is to make sure that we're there and available over, you know, the ATMs available over the weekend and that we can put cash in on a Monday morning or a Friday evening to ensure that there's enough there. I know that in our Tumbler Ridge branch, I believe it does have one of the largest cash limits out of all of our branches because at one point we were the only one with an ATM in the community. So, again, we understand that people will be affected by it, we want to continue like again with the ATM, it should be no different. It should be no different because we're getting it filled Monday morning if we need to, it can be filled again on Wednesday if it needs to, it can be filled again on Friday if it needs to. So the ATM, there should be no issue whatsoever. I can't foresee it, but again, I don't deal with the ATM on a regular basis and I can't make that promise to you right now. You know, banking has changed in the past, more people are doing it online. We are trying to include technology more for our Lake Credit Union members. Deposit Anywhere is a new product that we're hopefully having on stream where our members can take the picture of their check and automatically deposit so they don't have to come in. We're looking at, you know, implementing or enhancing our mobile app service. So we're doing things along that line and again, I know it doesn't do any justice for the announcement that we've made, but there are alternatives for our membership to deal with, you know, people that need to come in and whether it's, you know, night deposits and things like that or business deposit, we still have the night depository going and things like that. So, from our standpoint, again, with, we've taken, you know, honestly, we're looking at cost cutting, but with the least amount of impact that we can have in the community of Tumbler Ridge. And we feel that we are doing that moving forward. And, you know, one of the things that I talked to a few members or community members about is, you know, if it's a long weekend where it's closed on a Monday, we're going to be open on a Tuesday. We're going to make sure that we have those service dates, we don't want to take anything more away from it. You know, if it's over at Christmas time, Boxing Day and Christmas or Monday, Tuesday, well, we'll open Wednesday, Friday. That's kind of what we'll do, but if it's a long weekend and it falls on a Monday, we're going to be open. If it's a long weekend and it falls on a Friday, we'll open Thursday. We're making that commitment to our membership at this point, we don't want to take more away than we have. Now that is our commitment on that. So, I don't foresee an issue with the ATM, but again, I don't, I don't work with the ATM on a regular basis and, you know, I did have a conversation with a community member that told me the ATM had issues at times and it was the first time I've heard about it. You know, I have to rely on our management to look after those things and our staff to look after that as well. But if there's issues, we need to go about it so we can deal with it and fix it.
Thank you. Can you speak specifically to the number of mortgage defaults you guys have had in Tumbler Ridge?
I can't. Counselor Ha, you can bring that information with me, but one thing I can tell you specifically about Tumbler Ridge is when the mine shut down, our delinquency went up, doubled, it doubled. And the loan allowance that we set aside for Tumbler Ridge is in the neighborhood of 1.5 million. And so, when I got to Lake Credit Union, our loan allowance was about 1.2 million, it actually decreased $600,000 to $700,000 and then by the end of that year was up to 200 or 2 million. And now we're over 3 million for a loan allowance. So specifically to Tumbler Ridge, I can tell you that we have set aside 1.5 million and so that is a direct hit to the credit union as a whole. The specific number of delinquencies and, you know, I believe that we have or are working on over 10 houses right now of repossession and things like that. I know that we have a few houses in Tumbler Ridge right now that is in our possession, but I can't give you that exact number.
So roughly half of the money that you set aside, I mean, Tumbler Ridge, Dawson Creek, Chet, St. John?
No, no, St. John.
Sorry, not for St. John, is just, half of it is just for Tumbler Ridge?
That's correct.
The delinquencies here.
Counselor, I'd like to go to Counselor Krikokah and then I'd like to open it up to those in the gallery who might have some questions as well.
Just to hit on Counselor Kirby's comments in regards to bank machine, then you made the comment how you haven't heard about the issues we've had there. It's huge. Like we've had three, four weekends back to back, that machine is down, starting Friday night. Where we have tourists come to town, they're locked into town because they can't get money from the bank machine. So I'm just curious, are those bank machines not alarmed for when they go down? That something is sent to your call center?
So, yeah, we don't have a call center and normally that's up to a notice to staff or to management. I can tell you specifically here, I don't think, I don't know, I don't know Darryl, sorry.
Oh, that's fine, you can ask him.
Yeah, what did, I'll find that out, I will really find that out because I'm not aware of it. If, you know, if our ATM does go down, we need two people to come in and services, it's dual custody and, you know, I'll follow up with that just to make sure.
So just on that same point in regards to repairs, I know there's been times myself being there, you know, waiting for a repair guy to come. They'll come tomorrow, but I've also been in Dawson Creek when their machine goes down and an hour later there's a repair guy. I'm just wondering, well, that's going to three day a week? If maybe that service can be brought up to the same par as Dawson Creek in regards to repairs?
Again, to comment on what happens in Dawson Creek and what happens in Tumbler Ridge, I can't. I would hope that our suppliers and our techs would treat us the same everywhere and I'm hoping, and I'm not, I can't answer this to you right now, but I'm hoping it's not a management direction where we're just letting Tumbler Ridge on their own. That's not the way that we operate. You know, sometimes it is, it's hard for us to get suppliers in Dawson Creek and, again, I can't comment on that specifically, but I will take that back and determine what we're doing. And again, right now, I'm just going to assume and that on me for not knowing specifically, but maybe we don't have the alarm on call, I'm not sure. And, you know, we'll take that back.
Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, gallery, if you have questions, now would be the time, I'll recognize one at a time and so forth. Go ahead.
Hi Kelly, my name's Janice Turner, you and I talked before a couple of weeks ago. It was myself that had, you know, a big machine and our issues in our town. So two weeks you haven't done any, you haven't checked, like what is the percentage?
Sorry, no, I, yeah, that's my bad, I haven't, I haven't.
Sorry, that's a sense of, a message of, not a hyperbole.
Well, I can tell you the one thing after the conversation, your emails, I went back and forth. Sorry, it's not that I've been doing anything with it, I leave that up to management, it's not up to me to determine what's going on in the ATM machine over here. I want to make sure that the service is available.
Right.
Right? And I can't tell you right now. No, I can't. Whether it's, we're not determining that we're, we have staff on call or not, you know, I have staff members here. They can probably tell me right now that we don't do that, we don't offer. They go down, they go down and we wait till Monday morning.
That's.
So again, that is bad on me, I will admit that. It is a hyperbole for me, I can tell you right now, my bosses are here. I will look into that and make sure that, let you know what our decision is moving forward.
Thank you. Because like I said, it's back to when Scott tried to see the bank manager, we experienced that, so that's many years ago. I think one other comment is with the reduction of hours, I would just hope this isn't a setup or failure for, well now, people can't get to the bank because it's only open 12 hours a week, so then we're forced to make our business elsewhere and then Lake views us, you're not supporting us.
Well.
It's a mutual.
Yeah, see, and I.
Relationship.
A little bit of trouble with that because we are the only financial institution in town and there are a number of people that choose out the deal.
Oh, my husband and I own a business here in town.
Not easy.
We have many people that are residents here that don't shop with us. I'm just, people have a choice, but you want to leave convenience there and that ability to be there for your customer. there for your customer. And with 12 hours a week, that's a pretty slim opportunity to be a customer.
Ladies and gentlemen, we also have a mic that we're going to pass out as difficulty here. So please use that.
I attended your AGM this year and I didn't hear anything about this decision or even talk of this decision. So I'm wondering if it was made after the AGM or prior to the AGM or something that's been in works as I, I didn't hear anything of it mentioned at the AGM.
So it wasn't mentioned at the AGM. I can tell you that this has been a discussion with our board since I've been here, service levels in Tumbler Ridge. We've, you know, there were issues in the past with district council and Lakeview Credit Union where we didn't see eye to eye and we've come to an agreement on banking arrangements there. You know, but even prior to that, we've had this discussion with the board, service levels and things of that nature. And I can tell you that the board has supported service levels in Tumbler Ridge because, you know, we are a credit union, we are a whole small town and things of that nature. The reality of it is, is we're facing, we're facing a completely different economic environment right now. And we're making the decisions that, you know what, aren't good for Tumbler Ridge in the community, but what we feel is for the benefit of the membership as a whole.
I understand from attending the meeting that with North Peace Credit Union moving in and there's all, all of those different, different things that you're looking at, that it is going to be a tough year and I appreciate the difficulty that your board is facing and that you have to make those tough decisions. This isn't dawn, is it? I'm just holding it up like, is it? Okay, okay. This is just weird. But I appreciate that you're having to make those tough decisions. I guess you're not going to find any love in that decision in Tumbler Ridge because it does impact these, the people here. It impacts people who are maybe working shift worker, who are coming in on weekends and they can no longer do their banking here. And those are the people that it's really going to impact. It's going to impact businesses that need to make deposits daily. Those sort of things are going to be huge impacts on, on the community. And so although I understand it from a business point of view, it's difficult from a heart point of view because this is my community and these people have already, our community has already undergone so much loss in the last two years. And this is just another one of those things that adds to that loss. So again, I appreciate the decision making on a business sense, but on the other side, it's a tough one.
Like, you know, the one comment I want to make is with all of North Peace, you know, they are a neighboring credit union, they were what we considered our friends for quite some time. You know, and I'll be honest with you, we're competing with, or with North Peace Credit Union here in Tumbler Ridge. And for us, you know, for us to have to compete with institutions that don't have bricks and mortar, that aren't investing in the staff and things of that nature, it's really hard for us. It's really hard. And we understand that people have to do what's best for themselves, but we can't, we can't compete with institutions that aren't bricks and mortar, that have no cost structure here whatsoever.
What would have been cool is if, if there could have been dialogue prior to the decision with business and with the community. And the community could have taken steps to see what we could have done to make things better. I'm the chamber manager and you are a chamber member and it would have been really awesome if we could have worked together to see if there were steps that we could make prior to the decision being made. Actually, that was just going to be my point. I'm curious as to what your consideration was to come to us first and maybe talk to us as a community, as members, as businesses, and why there was no dialogue with us ahead of time so that we could do something or at least have a discussion about what was going to happen.
I, you know, I guess I would throw that back out to the chamber here in itself and say, like, what would have, what could the district or the community come and done for us to make this a different decision? Like, completely honest, we didn't feel there was any options that yourselves or the district would have brought forward to us to change our minds.
However, you did make that decision without even talking to us. Maybe, maybe with some dialogue there could have been some. Right now, we're kind of on the spot because we haven't had time to think, we haven't had time to process it. But maybe had there been some meetings or some dialogue ahead of time, maybe together collectively, you and us could have come up with something.
That's a fair point.
It would have been nice to have a heads up ahead of time because it was, it was just thrown at us and thrown at the staff as far as I know as well without any, you know, we couldn't have come to you until after with that, which was frustrating for us. That's my point.
The one thing I will, you know, and I got to recognize that both sides of the community itself, this is very, very hard on itself that's sitting here. It's, it wasn't easy for us to go in and have that conversation. Can you imagine if there's dialogue and there's no decision being made, what impacts to them would have been? You know, I, it's probably not fair to say that, I understand that things might change, they might not change. You know, and again, point taken that we probably could have come out and had dialogue. I honestly don't know, you know, I'm sitting here, I'm not knowing what was the decision that we made. But again, yeah, your point is taken.
So you did, you did say that, you know, how would, how could the district or the chamber have influenced your decision? You just mentioned that.
John? Can you repeat your question into the mic? We have trouble hearing it. I want us to make sure.
I thought I had a loud enough voice. You said, you said that, you know, perhaps the chamber, the chamber or the district could have done something to influence your decision. I mean, what could we have done to?
That's, that's the great question that I'm asking back to, you know, district and to the community side. You know, when we sit here and make a decision like this, it's not taking money. I can tell you the board doesn't like coming, as a volunteer board, coming to their job and having to make a decision like this. That's, that's the question that I'm asking. Like, I, I don't know. I don't know what that could be. I really don't know what that could be. Are we open to listening to something? Absolutely sure. Will it make a change? I'm not going to promise any.
You turned the question off, you know, around onto the chamber and the district thought you were.
Yeah, I, you kind of turned it around, right down on me. I really haven't, you know, fully put any thought in.
I just want to make sure that we, everybody gets an opportunity to ask the question and so forth, so if we can keep to moving along, that, that would be great. I think, gentlemen.
I just, I have one point to make. I know that this has been discussed before and I've been, I've been told this before by credit union staff or management more than staff, is that people in Tumbler Ridge don't bank at the Lakeview Credit Union. And me as a business, I would want to know why that is. Like, I think that, I understand where you're coming from. If you're the only branch in town, I would be asking myself, why are residents not banking with us? And I know that some of it has to do with the history, but I haven't seen any Lakeview Credit Union coming out and saying, we want you to bank here. How come you aren't banking here? So I totally appreciate where you're coming from because I run a business. I guess I get a little bit frustrated when I hear that we have residents not banking here. To me, you guys are a business and you should be asking why people aren't banking here.
Well, yeah, if I can, just a couple of things, please. I was involved in regional district and stuff and we sat on together actually for regional district when tech closed the tech, all this issue was happening around here. And I don't know, I'm sure there's a number of you here who were involved back in that time as well. And you know that the only financial institution in town at that time just closed its doors and left.
They kind of burned to the ground.
But they could have. No, they left. Their board of directors, the summers in Toronto, nobody came out to here, nobody came out to look at it. Nobody looked at mitigating measures with the community of that nature. And it was only after that, that the district of Tumbler Ridge, the council of the day, with this gentleman as your mayor, Mr. Al, was, along with MFA Municipal Finance Authority, said, what can we do? No bank was going to come to Tumbler Ridge. So they approached Lakeview Credit Union and said, you've got a branch in Dawson Creek, one in Chatlin, would you consider coming out here? And an arrangement was made with the council at that time. Basically, gentleman's agreement as how, to how things should unfold because we felt that the community as a credit union should have a financial institution. I mean, that's just the reality. I mean, all the points you're making, if a, if a community loses their school, they kind of feel hooked. If you lose your financial institution, you feel hooked. If you lose your hospital, you feel hooked. All those things are big things. When you lose your source of income, that's huge. Absolutely. So I mean, those are all factors that impact the community. You always want to look at something to kind of keep it going. I did just a little looking and talking about our friends with the big banks. This is this year's here. RVC is closing all kinds of branches across Canada this year so they can make more money for their shareholders. Scotia is closing all kinds of branches, this is all across Canada, all over the place. TD are closing 40 branches with communities larger than Tumbler Ridge because they're not making enough money there, people aren't branching. And in each one of these cases, one of the biggest things they're saying is that more people are doing mobile banking more than ever. That, just as Kelly had mentioned earlier, there's less need for bricks and mortar than ever before because so many people do their banking either online or with their mobile phone or however it might be. And I mentioned, most people on average might only attend a bank maybe once a month or every couple of months if they have to do a certain kind of transaction. So those are all factors as well. And when this discussion came up about Lakeview cutting its hours back here, it's not something that we took lightly because we knew that it would have an impact. We knew there'd be these kinds of comments from council and from the members and we certainly appreciate them. And I think if things could turn around in the community, if there's unemployment happened, I think our board will begin at, at readjusting. But it's like any business, you know, if, I was in business for a number of years myself. If things go bad, you got to cut back in places, but you still want to offer the service. You can't always be as convenient for everybody all the time. You look at what is the best case scenario given the current situation in the economy, both in the community and in the economy. And we thought it was better to have a financial institution here than not have one. And to have it at least at half time rather than full time is better than none at all. So, you know, we're, we're trying our best to, to continue because like you, I totally agree, we want to support Tumbler Ridge. It's, it's to all of our benefit to have, this is a wonderful community, it really is. I've got family that live here and have made their livelihoods here. And, and I, I appreciate this community and I think that we want to see it succeed. And we're trying to do our best as well from our point of view and it's tough. There's no tweaks about it. Like hearing what you're going through and your comments, certainly communication maybe could have been better. There's no doubt about that. We take that in stride and I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, I don't know what could have changed, but maybe getting there might have been better. I don't know. But it's tough. And so totally, we all have to put our collective shoulders to the wheel and see if we can make it work for all of us.
Is there any under? Yes, Paul.
Couple of points. First, I will say that I personally don't bank at Lakeview. I've had a bank in Ottawa for 35 years and I use the same branch. And I think that's why people are not using bricks and mortar building because the services are available. It's why the big banks can close branches because they're offering the services. You mentioned that you're going to have electronic services, electronic deposit. The company that I manage in Tumbler uses Lakeview Credit Union. But there are many times when my customers, my library customers or my Avon customers can't use Lakeview to do electronic transfers, to deposit checks electronically. So you're saying that there are going to be services. So when are you going to, before you close the hour, before you reduce the hours, are you going to have those services available to people?
So the Deposit Anywhere is where you take the picture of the check. We've signed our contract with our supplier. We paid for it. It's in test phase. I can't tell you right now. We're hoping it's here August 1st, but I cannot, I can't, I can't commit to it. There's third parties that we deal with that they're involved in the timing and things like that. The, the increase in mobile web should be here by the end of August as well. And, you know, again, we're dealing with third parties. It's been our plan, it was on our budget, it was part of our business plan that it's here to get those in place for all the membership of Lakeview Credit Union. So I can't commit to the timing, but hopefully it's by August 1st.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just have a question, more of a comment too. I know you have the three branches and Tumbler Ridge and Dawson Creek are your only unionized branches. And you're telling us that you laid up eight people in Dawson Creek and Tumbler Ridge is getting hit. Does that unionization thing have anything to do with it? I know you're up for recontract right now. How much bearing does that have on what's happening here in Tumbler Ridge?
Has done whatsoever. As I mentioned before, you know, since I've been here in February 2014, we've, we've cut back all positions in our credit union, outside of the union. This is the first time that we're looking at unionized positions.
Right. But you say Chatlin's not getting touched, but Chatlin is your only un-unionized branch. I just want to know why, why, it just seems kind of peculiar that that's what's going on.
The optics aren't good, I'm not going to disagree with you on that.
Right.
But again, I've, I've said before that in Chatlin, when we had positions to come vacant through attrition, we looked at those positions. And Chatlin is adequately staffed for the services that we're providing in that location right now. Again, it has no bearing whatsoever on union or non-union.
Have you stopped all expansion?
Pardon me?
Have you stopped all your expansion that you're going to be developing anything?
No, we, we are moving ahead with the branch in Chatlin.
All right.
And the reality of behind that is, and again, optics aren't good. That's something the board has looked at six years ago and that's something that's finally come to fruition. We had an engineering firm go through our branch in Chatlin and they said it would cost you more to renovate than it would to build. And so if we wanted to continue the membership or offer services in Chatlin to our membership, we needed to build a new branch. Now, the great thing about building a new branch is that you can advertise that cost over 40 years. So it's not a right upfront cost for us. So again, that investment is in the long term. And so again, optics, I completely agree, doesn't look good at all. But that's been in the board's discussions four years prior to me coming here. And the reality is, if we don't build a new branch in Chatlin, we're not offering services there.
Yeah, they're not offering services either, either, if they're cutting back.
I would, yeah, I would tend to disagree with that, but.
What do we be doing for grits fest when we have grits fest here? Quite a few people coming into town, probably maybe 2,000, 3,000 extra people in town. Are you going to have the ATM open there?
Well, again, I committed to everybody here tonight. And then again, my apologies for not doing it two weeks ago. I'll take that back and make sure that we are providing, I have to find out what we're doing here in the ATM. And if the ATM's going down and we're not calling staff, we'll have to relook at that based on the new decision. And so you have my commitment. And again, my bosses are here to ensure that I follow up on them.
Okay, anything further? Mr. Snyder?
Just one question. Well, I can do actually. I think I talk loud enough. Okay, some of the services, I don't even think this is working.
We can hear you.
Anything?
We can hear.
I'll admit I bank elsewhere. I bank here as well, but I have another bank that I was with for 30 years. But the services here that I can't, like, I have properties in Kelowna, but I can't pay my taxes in Kelowna from a credit union, but I can charter bank. So there's, there's certain things that aren't offered that people have to go elsewhere in order to get, which, you know, I support business here, I do as much shopping as I can here and I support credit. But there are certain things and I, I don't know what the reasoning is for that, why.
So, you know, we recognize as a, as a financial institution that's local, we're in three branches. And the difference between a credit union and a bank from a retail perspective is when you hold the bank, if you open your bank account in, let's say Regina Saskatchewan, you're still able to deal everywhere across Canada, right? you're still able to deal everywhere across Canada, right? Credit unions are different. They're local independent organizations that aren't partners across Canada. Now, there are some steps that credit unions have taken, like being free ATM. So you should have access to ATMs across Canada with your debit card pre-charge. You know, in BC specifically, we have an inter-provincial agreement where a credit union, if you have a member down in Kelowna that wants to do cash a check or something, then the credit unions can deal with one another and that member can get their check capped. But that's the biggest difference is, as a local independent F5, when you go to Regina, they're not going to have anything to do with you if you're a Lakeview Credit Union member. You can go to the ATM and do things of that nature, but you can't deal with. So that's the biggest difference. Banks are across Canada, credit unions aren't.
Yeah, that's my only thing. And just to go back to Chairman there. I was the one that applied for the position on the board after Bill Henley left. Not the year he left, but the year after. But I found the process was, I'd say, too long and it, there was no, when I found out, like meetings were not held in Tumbler Ridge, you'd have to book Dawson all the time. But I just didn't have the time commitment for that. So I don't know if that's something you can change in your minutes or your agenda so that that can be an option, maybe that might get somebody onto the board to apply to get onto it.
So, you know, and again, I'll invite the board here. So my comment to everybody around the board is legislation and regulation have changed dramatically for credit unions. You know, and I'm going back to 2008 when we seen what happened in the States with the financial institutions and people going broke. There is a lot more responsibility and onus on the membership or on the board of directors to ensure that they're being fiscally responsible with the whole member, membership's money and all that stuff. So there's, there, you know, it's not, it's not a fun job at times because you have a great deal of information that's coming to you and you have to make decisions that's best for your financial institution where there can be repercussions personally to you as a director for those decisions that you make. The one thing I will mention is, you know, from the board's perspective, they've understood that people travel more, they understand that people are gone. So they have it in their rules, which is their bylaws right now, that there can be meetings via phone, meetings via Skype or whatever it is. It's right in their rules. So, and again, I'll make a, you know, even though it's not specifically, there's an onus to have a person in Tumbler Ridge or Chatwin or Dawson Creek, the board is more than welcoming. In the past two to three years, our credit union hasn't gained enough interest for board members. And so if, like Everett said, if there's one person running from Tumbler Ridge, this year they would have got in for sure. And it's really, you know, in saying that, it's up to the board as a whole to make the decisions best for the membership, right? And it's the same as district council right now. You make the decisions based on best of the community. And same thing with the credit union directors. So there is ways for us to, to, you know, for members that aren't in Dawson Creek to have meetings over the phone or via site or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know if that was an option when I.
Yeah, it was. That's how we talked to you.
Did it? Okay. Anyway, so just my comment on that.
Okay, yes, sir.
Just wanted to make just a couple of comments about my counsel, Kasey. And it was, kind of in response to, you know, Dawson Creek representation and no Tumbler Ridge representation. And I want to kind of give a little insight into board meetings and what we do. We absolutely always love that. We are a regional organization and not just based in Dawson Creek. We do know we've got Tumbler Ridge, we do know we have Chatwin and we talk about all three branches at every meeting. Kelly just mentioned it and, you know, we have to, right now, we are looking long-term because we're answerable not only to our members, we're answerable to the Financial Institutions Commission, BC. And they're starting to tighten up with all of their regulations as well. So we have to be looking far out to ensure that we've got required capital to protect our members. It's under their rulings that we need to do this. So there's a lot of pressure on us as board members right now to make sure that we are fiscally responsible. And Joe mentioned it before, we do not take any of these decisions lightly. They're, they're, you know, we all live in the communities that we are in. Joe's got family here, I've lived in this country all my life. And so we take pride in it. We don't absolutely discredit anybody. We absolutely want, we will take back and we always talk about our service levels as well, especially talking about the, you know, the mobile banking and the like and the people having the convenience that they want. That's how you attract the other members. And we talk about that a lot at our board meetings as well. So community is important to us and I just wanted everybody to know that. But it's just not, we're sitting in the office and saying, no, let's just do this. It's important to us what impact it has. So we question Kelly a lot on that, so.
Okay, we, I'd like to wrap this up by seven. Another five minutes. I know there was another question from Steph. Did you have another?
No, they answered it while I was talking.
Okay. Was there anybody else in the gallery that wanted to ask before we make some closing comments?
Actually, I have one other comment. I'm at the library and we've had a lot of interaction with Service Canada. And I'm not expecting you to answer this because it's confidential HR information. But I'm wondering, in order to mitigate the impact on staff, as the staff issue has been raised, whether you investigated the work sharing program that's offered by the government that allows you to lay off your existing staff for, let's say, a day a week. So you've got them working four days a week. You're going to lay them off for one day. The government will give them EI for that other day, making them still loyal employees for you so that you don't lose a trained employee with the hope that in six or nine months, maybe things will change and you'll be able to give that individual back their full position or more hours. I wonder if you've looked at work sharing and if not, it might be something that you want to look into.
The answer is all that we haven't. And again, a lot of our staff are here, right? It wasn't easy. Talked to our staff about this. I made it very clear to our staff that we want them to work with us but understand that this is a big impact to them personally. And so, you know, we're dealing with their union on what their rights are and things of that nature. And we made it very clear that we'll try our best to support staff, but it's their choice in the end. But Service Canada, again, is something I can take back to determine why there is anything.
Not very many people are aware of it. It's something that I think a lot of businesses in town are going to have to look at over the next couple of years.
Thank you. And I'll come right to you. You had a question?
So, just to ask a theoretical question. If we, the District of Tumbler Ridge, were even able to possibly invest another, double the amount of money that we invested, we were able to put in another $10 million, would that change anything that you're doing here today?
No.
Very much.
I, I do want to comment on that though.
Sure.
And again, for some, this is new, for some it isn't. We've come to an agreement with the District of Tumbler Ridge almost two years ago on a certain amount of funds. And, and, you know, for us, it's hard because the district did really support Lakeview in having their funds with us at essentially zero return to the district. Now, understanding the district needs to do its best for the membership of the community as a whole. You know, our agreement with the district is now, and I'm just using rough figures, what cost us nothing before, costs us around $200,000 a year. And so that, that's money that you guys get, that we're paying you for your deposits with us. But that's how much it's added to the bottom, to the impact of the bottom line of our credit union. And so, again, when we get an email to ask to compete with people that aren't here, it doesn't sit well with us. And so, you know, I can't blame the district for looking at their best options for their, their community on the investment side because you are looking out for a number of people that live here. We just can't compete. We cannot compete with somebody that's not here. And in saying that, it's, it's hard for us to compete at the level that we are right now. It really is. But we have an agreement with the district, so.
Mr. Gentleman?
Go ahead, sir.
No?
You, you mentioned.
Oh, okay.
Last speaker.
I just wanted to say, it's a feeling of small town versus big town, but we're all small town. We're all small potatoes up here. Nobody's really big. I'm not from Dawson Creek, I'm from Pousque Bay. If you come from Pousque Bay and you get elected, surely if you come from Tumbler, you can get elected to the board. It should be no problem, like you name it. I will say that in 1978, I had a family business in Pousque. I finally, I got squeezed out six years ago. I'm retarded. I got squeezed out six years ago. And in 1978, the Bank of Congress closed the branch in Pousque. And Kelly said there's been resistance to dealing with Tumbler Ridge. That's what we call Tumbler Ridge. And it's from that viewpoint. So from being able to walk down the street and deposit, it ran an hour, it took a half hour at least, minimum, if traffic was good, if there was no lines, to an hour for me to go in and make a deposit. I have to hire staff to go in and make a deposit because Bank of Congress pulled out of Pousque. And that cost me money. We're still here. Just three days, but we're still here. But it's, so we understand, I understand, Joe's from Pousque at one time, he understands. We're all small town and we try to make as much as we can of it. And we're trying to stay small town, actually. We want to be a part of the small town around this area. We don't want to pull out. We want to be a part of Dawson, we want to be a part of Chatwin, we want to be a part of Tumbler. We really want to. And I really encourage you to actively work on getting somebody to run for a board. Please do that.
Well, gentlemen, just in closing, I, in particular, this is at least a second, if not the third time that you've had a council. And you've always been cordial and receptive to come in and answering the questions and dealing with the concerns. And on behalf of council, we thank you very, very much for that. It's, it's open, it's a good discussion. First time that we've had the pleasure of having some of our residents here as well. You've been always upfront with us and we appreciate that. I wanted to make sure that you were at least, haven't been in the hot seat once with us, if I can use that term. You've handled yourself very, very well and we appreciate that input and we'll continue to work together. So again, on behalf of all of us, thank you very much for coming and taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Elsa, what do you say we take a five-minute break? Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Appreciate that. Pat, you're most welcome. Thank you, appreciate that. Thanks so much. Yeah, you're welcome there. Mike, yeah. Hot seat on one side. Appreciate that, thank you.
No fireworks, you must have survived. I don't know, I did, there was no commitment and, I mean, it's, expect more of all. I find it kind of odd. Chatwin is suffering up. So Tumbler Ridge is taking the big hit here.
But you know, Rob? We had the conversation, everything nice and nice to the residents, so. Not too wrong of that, so.
Doesn't matter. You know, and I think that once upon a time, the argument that, that we're here for the ad times as well as the good women.
We're trying our best.
Yes, so, they would, they would probably stick around a lot longer. Let's say that's not the case anymore. Anyway, you know, at the same time, the gangs, right?
To me, the biggest, biggest situation in your personal life is Tumbler Ridge. See, when you value, you don't have a voice there. It's a shit.
Well, so that's something that's, that is a board to do.
Or any, any of them. Or even a strong member of the team staff. It wouldn't be anything viable. If you're going to do that, you know what I mean? Nobody speaks better about things than us.
No, and I'm not, I'm not, because it didn't. So it's not in the board. Come down to the board. Run out for their feelings. I mean, there's a possibility of that.
You're not old enough, but I'm interested in what's in your shoulders to handle three, you know? And stuff like that, years, years ago. Well, not here, but I meant years ago. And that's with the banks.
I am old enough. But, you know, we used to run the tag store.
She's got to win that. Yeah, yeah. That's right.
Yeah, appreciate that. Well, you know, so, and you know, like, I don't know what the population is of Tumbler Ridge or what it was, but what was it at its highest? So if it was 4,000, I'm just going to guess, just pull a number, it's 4,000. Probably half of them, didn't half of them, they still banked at the RBC or CIBC or wherever they banked. So you can do it. It's not like, it's not like you can't do it. You can do it, like the, she said that she still banks in Ottawa.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You know, like, so, whereas the credit union, the whole idea behind it is you allocate local, like, local people to run your local bank. And the money stays local, it doesn't go back to a base company either. So if we had dividends to give out, it would all come back to the people. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, exactly.
Appreciate that, thanks.
I can't get in.
You don't know how to use it.
I need my password.
When I got down, when I got down to him, looking around the corner, there was a train.
And there's rings of a fort.
I thought, oh, I should have gotten that. Apparently the bridge is up. To me, it looked like the bridge was. Why apparently it's up there, apparently it rocks it, rocks it six days.
Council, I'd like us to now continue with the rest of our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the airport's products, is the airport's challenge. You know, we have a recommendation on the floor that council approved the use of the District of Tumbler Ridge equipment and delivery to the Corlart site on August 5, 2016 in preparation for the airport's challenge 2016 marathon race to take place on August 6, 2016. Specific materials requested and approved as follows. April 5, the Morris follows the real.
prepare accessible unit. That's the recommendation, if I can remove her in a second here. Thank you, Counselor Kirby, and Counselor Powell. Thank you. Discretion? Yes?
I just want to point one thing out that I really liked that they put in her, uh, letter here, especially the use of the A T V side-by-side, they put in it if available. I really thought that was a smart idea to put in there, so it's nothing that we have to, to have a discussion about, that it's being utilized for any other event, it's strictly up to districts to act it if it's not available, and let them know if it is, it's, uh, clear range, I thought that was a smart idea to put in.
Thank you. Anything further?
Is the staff moved up to location during regular staff time, or is this something, like, it's...
Mr. Wall?
Uh, yeah, it would be moved up during regular staff time, so there wouldn't be overtime. However, the total cost for what's being asked here is somewhere between 25, $3,000. This would come out of council's grant initiatives, or, uh, grant contingency, sorry, but you do have funds available right now, council has $12,000 left in your, um, contingency, so this would be between 2,500 to 3,000, and then council also asked us to forward a $5,000 donation to the Fort Mac fires to the next regular meeting, so between those two, you're going to be very low if both are approved.
Any further? Other question on the motion, always the same. The motion is, thank you, Counselor. The next item on the agenda is the Northern Gateway, and recommendations are constant, see the correspondence for information or discretion, whenever is your pleasure. Counselor Powell?
So, I, I know I've missed a couple of meetings here, but have we had any response back from them, saying what they're planning on doing with the process?
Thank you. For the goal, any further, we're going to move for discussion.
Sorry.
No problem. Counselor Kirby, I was in favor, opposed, motion is kept, Counselor Powell?
Sorry.
No problem, no problem.
Uh, so, so again, has, uh, have we heard any response back from Mike Long Cross?
They have indicated that they're still finding, come back and talk to us, um, that when they sent this letter in, what they're requesting in this letter is that council approves staff to create a letter, uh, that would go to the provincial and federal regulatory bodies to ask for an extension on their E I process, so they've run out of time, and they're trying to get all the communities along the route to send a message saying, you know, this is not about supporting the project, they're not supporting the project, but simply giving them more time to meet those criteria that had been set down. So that's what they're asking, is this letter of support for the extension, and they had indicated that they are planning to come back. I, I forget the fellow's name, but the original geoscientist who spoke to council the first time about going under or over, um, Mr. Van Dyke did indicate that he would be coming back to council at some point.
So a letter that we would, we send a letter to them, or to, who do we, who would we send our letter of support to?
We would send a letter to them, and they could send it on to the appropriate bodies.
Would it be something to be advised, to possibly say that we're willing to support the project, provided that it goes under the river, or something that along those lines? That's my take on it, that I don't want it to sit above the river, and if this, if they're not willing to come back to us and give us a straight good answer, that's my take on it.
Just to comment on that, members, as me, right, we received a commitment from them as a, a nomination, that once they have made their decision as to their preference, that they would definitely be back here prior to any implementation, to advise us as to what that decision was. Now, that's what they've said and committed to us to do. However, is there any other action that you think is more to counsel, kind?
I did have the, the opportunity at the FCM to talk to the delegation from Northern Gateway and pointed out, there's not only, actually, we get a couple of concerns. Um, one of them is the river crossing, that in no way is council in supportive of what they have in mind there, and that the, uh, the idea of not being able to do that just didn't sit well, I mean, it's, they have to have the will to do it, that's all. Um, the other thing is, is that the power, I mean, we don't know really how much power this is going to utilize, and it might very well affect, or affect the, uh, the infrastructure that we have in Tumler Ridge in those regards. So there's a couple of major items that we have to discuss, and the panel said they would, they would pass that on to Donnie Van Dyke, and, uh, and we'd request that he, that they come to Tumler Ridge as soon as possible.
So that invitation has been extended?
Yeah.
Again, to come as a delegation, at which time we can discuss the details further?
That's right, it looks like, it looks like, uh, on both flights, so...
Counselor, is that...
Yeah.
Any other comments? Seeing that we're going to have a motion on the floor, uh, now, down to the question and answer period, that we have, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wall?
There's, um, 5.1.
I'm sorry? Oh, Willam Lake, my apologies. Yes, Mr. Wall?
Uh, there had been concern from council that the bridge at Willam Lake had been washed out, and, uh, looking at possible options on through the lobby to get the bridge put back in. In my investigation to find out who we need to talk to, I was informed that the bridge at Willam Lake has not washed out, it's still drivable, and what they're doing right now is simply waiting for some signs to be put up, for warning signs on boating, and also they're closing the trail, so they need to get those signs installed, and they're going to open the park back up. The ETA on that was, um, Friday, so they're expecting to have it open by Friday.
Any questions? Fair enough. Right, counsel, that takes us down to question and answer period as to what, uh, we made the amendment earlier on, and, uh, we're now leaving it open to those in attendance and also the press, uh, for any questions that you might have. Want to start, Trent, with yourself, sir, if you have any?
I have any, but not this.
All right. Anything from the gallery? Oops.
Does it have to be a question, or could it be a comment on the upbridge?
Comment would be fine, as long as it's brief.
Yeah. Um, the B.C. chamber, um, took a vote on the very same proposal, and Bridge brought it before them, and, um, passed it unanimously. Basically, they're just asking for an extension, and they figure if they can get this extension with the National Energy Board, so that's where the letter gets sent to. Basically, if they can get that extension, that will impact how it's done in the future. So that was the explanation we got there.
Thank you.
For all, all, all headlines, not just...
Okay. Tim, would you? No? Any further? Hearing that, I would then call for a adjournment, moved by Counselor Kirby, seconded by Counselor Scott, discussion, all in favor, okay, okay. Make the council?